Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have six members present. We have four here in the boardroom, and Dr. Luckett and Ms. Hilliard are on the phone. Therefore, we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Board members, we do need to request a motion to amend the agenda. The amended agenda would strike policy.
FH?
FH, thank you. Which is under 7C, Naming of Facilities. So, there was a conflict in the proposed policy with an AG opinion. So, we're just going to pull that tonight, and then we'll have additional discussion around what can be done. But the rest of the agenda will remain the same. So, if I could have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 21, 2023 regular board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Mr. Figus has seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Seaback. Good evening. Board members, to all of our team members, and those who are here with us visiting, and those who may be watching live stream. We'll begin, as we typically do, with a highlights reel from our instructional television team.
Brand-new, high-quality shoes for JPS scholars. Pre-K through 2nd grade at Pecan Park Elementary School. A donation made possible by volunteers from FedEx and the staff of Operation Warm, who teamed up to give back to the community.
So, we're feeding into their social-emotional well-being, making sure that our students are walking away with the confidence that they're needed to be successful, not just in school instructionally, but throughout life.
JPS Partners in Education hosted its annual Highlights Award Celebration at Northwest Jackson Middle School.
We need one another. You read to our children. You provide safe drinking water. You expose them to career opportunities, theatrical performances, college visits. You tutor our children. You enhance our buildings with fresh paint and seasonal flowers to welcome our scholars back to school in the fall.
The theme: The Power of Collaboration. The occasion: To recognize and honor businesses, organizations, faith-based groups, and individuals who have helped to enhance the educational experience of JPS scholars. A big turnout at Cardozo Middle School for the Parent and Family Engagement Summit.
We have various breakout sessions that span from pre-K through 12th grade. ACT sessions, socio-emotional sessions, as well as academic sessions.
It was an evening of food, fun, and fellowship. JPS administrators and teachers were there to answer questions about the many JPS programs available to guide scholars along the path to excellence in education. JPS scholars got some real-world experience exploring machinery at Trustmark Park in Pearl for Touch a Truck.
And letting them know that you can learn anywhere and everywhere. So, I can't wait to make this a lesson.
A family-friendly, hands-on event where scholars can ask questions and learn about potential careers in farming, manufacturing, and construction. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
Thank you, team, as always, for keeping us updated. And we, at the end of these videos, we remind folks to connect with us. I hope all of our board members have connected with us using the app. I won't ask you publicly, but I hope everyone has downloaded the app and that you're following us. I hope that if you subscribe, or if you use YouTube, that you click Subscribe on YouTube channel, just to make sure that you have all those wonderful videos and things. And of course, if you're on social media, that you're following us there. And the same for all of our friends and community members as well. Just please do connect. That's the best way to remain updated on all the things that are happening in JPS land. And so, we don't want you to be without that information. Board members, as you know, just over three years ago, the world shut down due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition to our loss of freedom during that time, and our loss of employment, many people, loss of social connections, we also suffered the loss of many loved ones and community members. We wanted to do something to remember our various JPS community members who we've lost, many team members, and others. And so, we wanted to do something, and our team has developed a video to express our thoughts and just some of the loss that we've experienced. So, our team will share that video with us now.
According to the CDC, the worldwide coronavirus pandemic began in 2019. The first confirmed COVID-19 case in the United States was reported on January 21, 2020. Over 1.1 million Americans have died from complications related to COVID. Over 13,000 Mississippians have lost their lives to COVID. The Jackson Public School District was virtual from March 2020 to August 2021. We want to pause and pay homage to those team members who passed during this time period.
And again, I want to thank our team for the thoughtfulness and just your hard work in creating something just to help us to remember those team members. And while we don't know that everyone lost their life as a result of COVID, we know that we had lots of losses during that time period. And so, we just wanted to lift those names up in remembrance. Thank you again. Board members, as we take this final sprint towards what we know will be a successful performance on the state test this year, I want you to know that I've charged our central office team members with tutoring scholars at selected schools. So, team members have committed to tutoring for at least eight hours a week for the next three weeks, in either ELA, English Language Arts, or mathematics. I want to thank our team members who work every day in schools and classrooms to ensure that our scholars meet with success. Our teachers, our school leaders, our counselors, special educators, our teachers assistants, all of the people who work in schools, even our operations team members who work in schools every day to make sure that our scholars meet with success and have the resources and conditions that they need to be successful. And as well, I want to take this time to thank those team members who don't typically work with scholars in school buildings for adjusting their schedules and joining in this effort. We're very close, based on our benchmark assessment and some other things. We're very close to reaching our goal of raising our performance yet another accountability rating. And so, you know, we've got a team who doesn't want to leave anything to chance. And so, I'm just thankful for so many folks who are willing to be uncomfortable and vulnerable, and just get into classrooms and get in where we can fit in. I don't claim to be a mathematician, and I will tell you, 6th grade math is a little harder than I remember it being in 6th grade. And yet, we're doing the thing. And so, I celebrate all the team members for their willingness and flexibility in this regard. And it's all hands on deck, and we believe that we're going to get there. So, thanks again to all of our team members, many of whom, I see it in your eyes, we've got to build our stamina back up for working with scholars in the classrooms. All right, board members, the 2023-2024 registration for new and returning scholars begins Monday, April 17. And parents who complete registration by May 24 will be entered into a raffle for gift cards. And scholars and schools will enjoy Kona Ice, pizza parties, and other raffled prizes. All of our scholars must have a 12-digit code to enroll for the 23-24 school year, and parents can use their Active Parent account to complete the online registration process. Registration hours are as follows. At Enrollment Services, it's 8:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and at school sites, it's from 9 until 3:00 p.m. And for most cases, they simply need to either register using the app or go to the school. It's only the special cases, special circumstances, that would require folks to go to our Enrollment Services office. We've tried to make it as simple as possible. We hear from parents over and over that it is a simple process, and it doesn't take long, and you can upload documents and all those things right there on the app. And so, for all those who can, we want to encourage them to do that. We're working to get at least 50% of our scholars enrolled by the end of the school year. And while that's far from where we'd like to be at that point, we believe it is attainable. It's also far from where we've been in years past, and we believe it is very much so attainable. We actually expect that with some of the prizes and other incentives and other things that we'll do, just kind of strategies that we'll use, that we'll blow that goal out of the water. But just know that folks will be working towards that starting April 17, which is when registration opens. And then lastly, board members, for six consecutive years, JPS scholars have won first place in the National Congressional App Challenge. This year's winning app is called Misspire. When asked what inspired the creation of Misspire, the scholar said, "Gun violence is a leading cause of premature death in the U.S. Guns kill more than 38,000 people and cause nearly 85,000 injuries yearly." At this time, I'm pleased to welcome our Career Development Center teacher, Maisha Wallace, who will join us and introduce one of our amazing scholars who's here with her, and talk a bit about the competition and the app. Welcome, Ms. Wallace. Great to see you again, six years and counting.
Well, good evening, Dr. Green.
Good evening.
Board members, JPS administrators, and honored guests, first I want to say, it's truly a blessing to walk in what you are called to do. So, as said, for the sixth year in a row, I would like to present this year's 20...I'm emotional. Yeah, I cried a little time. 23-24 Congressional App winners with their app, Misspire. And I also would like to add, they are your Samsung state winners for the second time in a row, and the only school to do that in Mississippi. Dr. Cusman, you please help me present Drew, the guy's our fellows couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
So, we would like to present Drew Overton. You want to talk about the app?
Please do.
Misspire, at its core, runs on three main features that sort of help it run. It is community outreach, so it's made so that you can sort of heal as a community, because I know that it's a big thing that we've affected, that happened to us on a communal level. And there's individual help, so we provide a chat function and access to therapy for people who need to heal individually. And then there are petitions, so that you can help to effect change in your government, which is the only way that we can really create change.
Amen. You mind if I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
May I?
Yeah, sure.
Are you ready to answer questions?
Yes, sir.
So, thinking about, I'm compelled by the cause, the issue, that you're addressing here. How hard was it for your team to arrive at that issue as the focus for your app?
Honestly, it was actually really easy. I sat down with our project manager, and I was like, well, what is one of the biggest problems that we're dealing with right now? And the first thing that he said was gun violence. So, yeah, it was just sort of like, one of the first things that came to our minds.
Have you, are there other apps out there that even try to address this in the ways that your app does?
Not on such a, like, it's not really the main focus. There are a lot of apps that offer access to, like, therapy, but none that really make it a priority for gun violence specifically, which I think is a big problem.
How are you safeguarding your app from being stolen?
Well, we do want to eventually patent this, and then, like, take it to, like, make it official that it's ours, like, fully make this a reality.
But may I add, they are, they will have the app available on the Google platform in May. We've already had, I think, someone from Congressman Thompson's office look at their app and other apps, and the state wants to use them.
Wow. Thank you. Before we take pictures and clap you up and all that, let me see if board members have any questions for you.
I don't have a question, but obviously, it's very amazing. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you so much.
Again, our Congressional App winner, winners, and again, for six years and counting. I can't imagine what we're going to do next year.
We'll win two, of course.
Give me a reason to travel and accept an award on behalf of the district? Sure. I just can't say enough about Ms. Wallace and the program, and the commitment to, not just to exposure, but to excellence. You know, it's nice that they have exposure to this work, but clearly, the vision is more than just exposure. Like, we're going out there with some high-quality apps and very clearly getting the response that we're looking for. So, just very, very proud of you, Ms. Wallace, and very proud of our scholars one more time for our win. With that, Dr. Seaback, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And before y'all leave, just, one of the things that struck me as we were commemorating all of the loss to COVID is the loss that we experience as a community is not just limited to COVID. The team does a really good job of, a good job is not even the right, appropriate way to describe it. But every time we lose a student to gun violence or loss, it's, we lift that up. And so, as I was watching the commemoration, I'm thinking, how do we commemorate the loss? But beyond just commemorating the loss, it's like, what do we do about it? And you're doing something about it. And so, we always look to our students for inspiration, and tonight, you are truly that. So, thank you.
Here, here.
Board members, we do not have any public participation comments, and so, I just want to remind the public that community members who would like to make comments should email their requests to Ms. Rosalynn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, or here in person in the boardroom, no later than 5:15 on the day of the meeting. The comments of the public are very important to the board, and we certainly encourage them whenever possible. Next, we have several information-only items. The first will be presented by Mr. Burke. Yes, Finance Committee meeting update, Mr. Burke. I saw the look on your face. So, board members, Mrs. Thompson and I had the opportunity to...
A quick question about the registration. What was the deadline? You said May...
Oh, it was May 24 for the incentive. I think it was May 24.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Let me make sure I have that. Yes, May 24.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just to help us to reach our goal by the end of the school year.
Great. Thanks, Mrs. Thompson. Board members, so we had a Finance Committee last week, and there was some really helpful information that was shared in the meeting. And following the meeting, I asked Dr. Green and Mr. Burke if they could lift up the highlights from that meeting and bring it here to the full board, so that we could just have the opportunity to hear from Mr. Burke firsthand, so that the board could ask questions. I know I benefit from the questions that board members ask, and obviously, having the information presented firsthand is certainly helpful. And so, with that, Mr. Burke, I'll turn it over to you to share the highlights. We did circulate notes and, I believe, the full slide deck from the meeting, so you've got those earlier in the week.
Okay, so I don't need to?
No, we definitely need you to present the information. I think, is the PowerPoint, do we have the slides that were presented?
They don't, they don't have any. Can they?
I'm doing.
Okay.
Okay, great. I believe it's just four slides, but they were, they hit the high points, so thank you.
Right. And specifically, I believe Mr. Burke will lift up the MAP, Comparison, Ad Valorem, Comparison, Milletage Rate?
Comparison.
Comparison? Was that it?
Emerging.
Emergency Priority. Emerging Priorities. Got it.
And then, I think, the Inflationary Products.
Yes, yeah, that's it.
Good evening, by the way.
Good evening.
I would sing, but I only, Wheels on the Bus Go Round and Round.
Wheels on the Electric Bus Go Round and Round.
That's true, too.
That's true. That's true.
Very exciting.
There we go.
Thank you. That's it perfectly.
Great, thank you.
So, yeah, this is an update from the Finance Committee. Very engaging conversation about what we'll be facing in the 23-24 school year. So, just, you have the MAP.
Was that the first slide?
This is the first.
Go back one.
That's the one, yes.
Yes. So, this is, this slide, basically, we're looking at projected enrollment of about 17,348 students. This graphic shows you elementary, how that breaks down, elementary, middle, and high. And then, our total enrollment estimate is 18, a little under, a little over 18,000 students. I'll be budgeting 96% of that for budgetary purposes. Enrollment, just by way of perspective, May 20 of 2022, we had 19,689 students. And as of March 27 of this year, we have enrolled 18,785 students. We would remind you that we have had, year-over-year, about, on average, about 4.3% decline in our student enrollment. That does not seem to have bottomed out quite yet, but we're hopeful that will taper off. Next slide is MAP Annual Comparison. In red, it shows you what has been discussed in terms of full funding. That is the arrow, the 2024 Full Funding Estimate is estimated at $115,000 roughly. The important things to take away from this slide, one is that the green shows you what our MAP allocation has been year-over-year from 2015. The blue shows you what our enrollment has been year-over-year, and you'll see that built, well, not our enrollment, but our ADA numbers from our, that we submit in that data capture, the two months when they capture our ADA. That is the number that she used for the MAP calculations. But you do see that it is a declining number. I want you to look at the amount that is being estimated for use in this year's full funding calculation. Average daily attendance at the time of capture was a little under 16,000 students. It was actually 15,978 students. So, that reflects, again, that decline, but also, our student, we need to increase our efforts for our students to come to school, particularly during that month when this is being counted. The other number, the red, indicates the base student cost. So, what you'll see is, as base student cost has increased, our average daily attendance has decreased, which reflects the subsequent number is a declining MAP allocation. The only reason it ticks up on this graph is that the talked-about, proposed full funding number is 115 million. Once that final number is allocated, this graphic will change, and that number will be whatever the legislature has determined at that point. Any questions about that slide?
So, the ADA number?
Yes, ma'am.
And what we are estimating or projecting for 2024, there's a difference?
Yes, so, the number I showed on the prior slide is enrollment. MAP is captured on ADA, so I have to budget a number. So, we choose the higher number as opposed to this number, in hopes that in that month, when we capture, hopefully, we can get those students to come back. But we still have those bodies, whether they're, whether they're not. So, we're not budgeting, I'm not budgeting the entirety of the enrollment that we project. I'm budgeting 96% less, I mean, 96%, which will be a decreased number, but it's still not, no, it will not be this 15 million, I mean, 15,000 number.
And why 96%?
So, I think, when I looked at it, that was the average of the enrollment at that time. So, that was the average over a period of time that came out to be 96%.
And just, you know, a note about that, you know, our team does their best in reviewing historical data in terms of enrollment, but we are making some decisions about budgeting before we have the actual enrollment number.
Exactly.
And so, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to be smart about it, but also, give ourselves some conservative, some room for slippage if we don't happen to meet the enrollment target that we've set for the next year. if we don't happen to meet the enrollment target that we've set for the next year.
It seems like we're operating from a disadvantage.
Yes.
And, and, yes, and there's so many factors in the, in the, the formula, and add-ons, and all of the things that go into budgeting, that you have to try and track and...
Thank you.
And this is where we are right now. This could, this could change by the next Finance Committee meeting. If things firm up, particularly that M A P number. Once it's firm, a little bit more firm, then we can really consider, some other decisions will start to solidify. Next slide is Avalorum Collection Comparison. Again, this, I do these historicals, and I tell Dr. Green, some, a lot of times, it's for me just to learn the district and to get a sense of the context in which we work. But they're also helpful, hopefully, for you in terms of level-setting, reminding you of where we've, where we've come from and where we're, we're going to. So, Avalorum Collections in the district over, since 2019, have stayed pretty consistent. We asked for roughly, for operations, we've asked for the same amount of money. The only real swing has been in debt service. So, when we passed the bond issues, the taxpayers vote to levy more to, to get that number. So, in 2019, we, as, we received about, requested ninety-four million, and we received ninety-two million, which was ninety-eight percent of what we requested. In 2020, ninety-seven million was, ninety-seven point three million was requested. We got ninety-seven point one, ninety-nine point seven percent. In 2021, we, we asked for ninety-seven point three, and we got ninety-seven point five. And in 2022, we asked for ninety-seven point two, and we got ninety-seven point two. So, fairly close in terms of, I mean, ninety-four point two. So, fairly close each year in what we're getting. I verify these numbers versus, the percentage of collections matches with the, the city has reported on their CAFR for what they get. So, we're getting the actual percentages that we're asking for. To keep, one piece of information here, a meal in our district brings a little, brings in a little bit over a million dollars, so for every meal, we, that's how much we, we receive. Next slide is our mileage rate comparison, and this is just, again, for context, when you're talking to citizens about us, the meals that we charge, and why education may, may seem expensive to them. Again, I want to point out sixty-five point nine one is what we asked for for operations. It has stayed pretty consistent over the last, almost in the last nine years, seven years, I'm sorry. The only change here, and there's not a, not having been a wide swing, is in debt service. It has ticked up from 2017, and again, that is due to bond issue and expense, sort of the decrease in our tax base. So, this is, but this will help you understand how we impact our taxpayers. And then, any questions, so, any, any questions about those slides? All right, so, next slide, inflation, the inflationary pressures, just the, and these things we want to lift up as things that will have an impact on the revenues that come into our district and will materialize as increases in expenditures. First and foremost, we have state school employees' health insurance will go up by five point eight percent in July 1 of 2024. Insurance premiums, these are estimates, but in our discussions with our insurance carriers, we're estimating double-digit increases, this is somewhere around twelve percent. We're working on strategies to mitigate that, but that is what they're estimating. General liability, that, that is the property, crime, auto, workers categories in general liability, in educators' legal, probably a five percent increase. Oil and gasoline, according to the CPI, U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, we're looking at seven point two percent increases over next, for next year. And then, utilities, thirteen point three percent increases. And then, again, per's, the increase for per's will go from seventeen point four to twenty-two point four in July 1 of 2024. So, those are some increased costs that we'll be facing. And then, the final slide that you will see here are our emerging priorities, things that, and this is, again, want to point out.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just want to point out one thing from the previous slide.
Yes.
This one here. So, of the numbers that are up there, there's seven point seven million dollars in new expenses.
Yes.
Is that it? And then, there, there's going to be more because of the percentages, but I just wanted the board to hear that in terms of what is up here, and that'll set up the next slide.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if they want to hear me for the next slide, but now...
Well, we want to hear it. We miss our wish list.
Emerging priorities list. This is not an exhaustive or final list. These are just the things we've identified in our discussions and in listening to the priorities of the board. Compensation increases for classified staff and support staff, somewhere around five million would be dedicated to that. Staffing, particularly in our, on our campus enforcement staff, looking at an officer per school would be somewhere around one point four million additional spending. Our professional development days, which will be paid for from title or federal funding, five days for our instructional employees, somewhere around one point five million. A large ticket item that jumps out at us is our Enterprise Resource Planning Solution. This is a system that will help us meet compliance on data management and those types of things, improve our, hopefully, improve efficiencies in how we operate internally, one point five million. And then, operationally, I'd like to increase maintenance budget by four times. We've budgeted about a half million dollars each year for maintenance. That has led to a lot of deferred maintenance on our facilities. As we look at the use of our facilities, it's important that we invest in those buildings that we're spending so much money to upgrade and renovate. So, that would equal to two million. We have, just want to note in here, there's some shuttered building carrying costs of about one point seven million. Facility planning consulting support would be paid for by some private funding at a quarter million dollars. And then, looking further down the line, just things that are, we're keeping eye on even further than this next school year, things related to the Esser Cliff. Those funds will dissipate in December of 2024. So, digital textbooks, we currently are paying for those through, with Esser funds or some federal funding, those will roll off. And then, the loss of that indirect cost that we're receiving and utilizing from those funds will also roll off. So, these are the, the highlights from the Finance Committee meeting, just things for us to think about. Again, we are firming this up, there will be further conversations with the Finance Committee meeting, and I'm sure I'll be bringing further updates, but just things to be thinking about.
And just one point on this one. So, if you add the previous slide up with this slide, it's a, it's a little over eighteen million dollars of new spending, and so, just putting it out there in terms of the things that need to be done to pay for this in light of the enrollment picture that was shared at the start of the presentation.
Yes.
Sobering.
So, the, what is our budget right now for campus enforcement?
I, I don't know right off the top of my head, but I can, I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, you know, just keeping in, in, in mind as well, you know, part of the work would be budgeting for finding the, the resources to pay for this, but then, we've got to find the people. So, you know, as we think about various functions within the district, you know, budgeting is a challenge, but also, the staffing of those positions to do that work, whether it's a teacher consultant, or tutor, or something else, a, a security officer, or enforcement officer. Finding the people is, is another challenge. So, if we, as we're going through this process, as we look out in the landscape and see that perhaps we can go as far as we're contemplating here, then how far, how much farther can we go? Can we go to middle schools? Can we go to schools with a certain data threshold that indicates more support would be needed there? That sort of thing.
Any other questions or comments? I'm choosing to look at it as an opportunity. I, I mean, I, I actually appreciate that we started with priorities, things looking at, starting aspirationally, and then, I know there's a really smart group of folks figuring things out like we have for the last several years, so, again, I appreciate that that's where we started. And so, looking forward to how you make it all, how you fit the puzzle together, Mr. Burke.
Me, me too.
You and your team. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next, we'll invite Mrs. Robinson, is it just you tonight, Mrs. Robinson? Okay, to share the bond update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Sebeck, board members, Dr. Green, I have the pleasure of presenting the board, the board bond update at the first meeting of each month. In tonight's presentation, it will be light, since we are ending most of our bond construction updates, so we will give a brief update of our major project that is underway, followed by the financial update and the Esser updates. So, our major project that we have underway is the baseball softball field. Right now, we do have some electrical work in progress. They are installing the stadium lights, the lighting. So, other than that, there's still have a lot of dirt work to do in order to, in order to prepare the field for the, for the grass and everything. So, at Newell Field, I mean, at Hughes Field, I'm sorry, we are installing some additional fencing to make sure the site is secure. Right now, I'm at track season, there were some entryways where people could gain access to Hughes Field, but with this fencing, it's going to close that off and make sure the site is secure. For the bond financial update, as of March 10th, 2023, we have expended or encumbered ninety-five percent of the bond funds. For this, as of March 10th, we've increased from eighty-six percent to eighty-seven point five percent of the amount that has been expended. So, right now, in the, we still have about three point five million dollars still unencumbered that we're going to be using for additional projects. The next three slides give a school-by-school outline of the budget expenditures encumbered in the budget balances, and we are moving to move those budget balances to unallocated for those projects that have closed. Now, on to what projects we have upcoming. The Wingfield Crossface Repair, that project, the contracts have been executed, and we'll be proceeding with a notice to proceed. For Wells A-PAC Elementary Renovations, which will be the restroom renovations, contracts are pending. We have received them back from the contractor. At Powell Middle School, we'll be, we will be doing window replacements and additional restroom renovations. That bid was awarded at the last board meeting, at March, at the March 21st board meeting, and now, we're entering into contract phase. John Hopkins includes carpet removal, student restroom renovations, some additional rooftop replacements. That is on tonight's agenda for board approval. And Piccon Park Elementary, that bid opened on March 23rd. The scope included HVAC upgrades, drainage and structural improvements, and just improving the overall building, building envelope. That, that award will be on the April 18th board meeting for approval. Last week, we had a very busy week of bid openings. Clausdale actually opened the week prior. We're followed by window replacements at Boyd, Green, Lake, Smith, and Wingfield. We did group several of these projects together, which were of similar scope to get better pricing, bid pricing. We will be moving forward for our bid award recommendation at either the April 18th or the first meeting, board meeting in May on these projects. Witten Middle School Project Re-Bid, at first, that project bid was over budget when it bid, but this time, it did come within the project budget. So, it is within budget, and we will be moving to recommend that for bid award. Jim Hill High School Renovations, we know that we've had some continuing problems with the HVAC at that school. That project bid opened today, and it did come within budget. So, we are going to be ready to come to board for approval for that award. And next week, Bailey A-PAC Bid Opens. So, that school includes new roof, HVAC upgrades, restroom renovations, and also, some classroom renovations as well. Next week, we will have several additional projects opening. They will be restroom renovations, HVAC upgrades, and HVAC upgrades at Boyd, Green, Lake, Walton, Wingfield, and Lester. That concludes the presentation, any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Board members, any questions, comments?
My slide wasn't reflecting the last one you had.
Okay.
Yeah, like that one.
This one, yeah. We added this one to give some more current information on projects that are bidding. So, we did add that one today.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of this to...
Yes, sir.
And my, you know, every time we talk about the bond, I always have to bring up the committees, so, like, the community part.
Yes.
And I know we were moving it from the bond oversight to another advisory type. Where are we on that? What happened?
They've been meeting, those individuals.
We changed up representatives, or how did that work?
We didn't change. We, we, I think the last we spoke of it, we had asked for any names or anyone that you all might want, if you have a space for, to fill, anyone that you wanted or thought you would want to fill that space. But we, those individuals, I believe there are three or four who've held on into this, this current space, and they, they are kind of stewarding across the city, asking questions about all, all schools and all communities and, and, you know, in, in the interim. There, there will be plenty more projects, though, so if, if, if you know of someone or want to encourage someone to, to join us in the work, by all means, yeah. That's, yeah, that's where we are at this point. And I think the, the, the few who remain, they seem to want to continue on with us. We just, you know, it's a lot on just a few people to look across all projects and across all wards.
It is. I, I just asked because I know I met Ms. Fale, and she, she told me that she's like, well, I'm just kind of holding down Wingfield, Forest Hill, you know, Ward Six, whatever. And I was like, okay, that's cool, but, you know, I didn't know if there, we needed more representation and work to
Yeah.
make sure that we had it, if it's, if it's necessary. I don't want one person to be overworked either.
Right.
But I know that Ms. Hendricks, they, they moved, and so, I knew that was
Right.
for Ward Six was not
Right.
covered.
Right, the remaining, and y'all held me out, remaining, I believe, are Mr. McGuffey.
Ms. Fale and also Ms. Keela Irving are the remaining members on the board. So, we are seeking your input for any placements to fill those vacant slots.
So, we have three on that committee?
We have three, right, currently.
Right, and so, four are missing, four slots are missing.
Then, we had our, our meeting last Tuesday.
And so, based on those names, sounds like we've got representation from one, six, and seven?
Correct. Well, no, actually, four. Ms. Fale is Ward Four.
She's four? Okay, so, one, four, and seven.
Yeah, because I think she's actually representative of a, a middle school, I think, but, but because she has a son at Forest Hill.
Yes.
That's the reason why.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the only reason I'm bringing that up is if we have, if, particularly, I'll just look to board members, if, if there are people in your ward who we could recommend. Certainly, let's, let's get our people.
And it's, I think, the team is doing a good job of, of not overtaxing folks. So, so it's, I think, a good way for anyone who might be interested to lean in and provide some feedback and some thought partnership. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, next, we have a review of various policies. Attorney Moore, our general counsel, will present this information.
Good evening, board members, board president, Dr. Sebeck, Dr. Green. The office of the general counsel is...
The office of the general counsel is permitting, presenting for information only, review of the following recommendations to these policies. DJ, activity funds and procedures. DIER, vendor protest and grievance procedures. DIA, authorized signatures. DoD, cellular phone usage procedures. DID, travel request reimbursement form. DEGE, fees. ECC, field trips procedures. EFB, property insurance. EI, energy management. GAK, use of personal and district vehicles. GBEM, drug and alcohol policy and procedures. JBI, grade and subject placement. JKAD, student safety. BFA, public records. And EBAB, emergency drills, policies and procedures.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, are there any questions? Were there any material changes in any of the policies that were more than just grammatical or something that was outdated?
There was a change to DIER, I believe, that previously, that's the vendor protest and grievance procedures, previously there was a provision that allowed, sometime back, that allowed for grievous vendors to be able to come to the board for an appeal, so there's a committee that is established, and after the committee, we did place a provision back in there for them to have a final appeal before the board, kind of like we do in executive session with disciplinary matters, before the decision is fine.
Okay, so we've, we've amended the policy to create, basically, we've created another step in the appeals process for the board to review
Correct.
Appeals, okay, and when there's a group, a contract grievance, okay.
Do you have anything to say to that, Louie?
No, and I will tell you, I actually recommended that change, it was in the policy originally, and I'm not sure at what point it was taken out. We've, at least to my knowledge, we've only had a handful of times that any vendor protest has had to come before the board, but what my concern was, is that when one has come before the board, it, it's usually been, been because there was an allegation of some illegality in the bid protests proceeding. You know, it wasn't properly bid, or it wasn't disseminated like it's supposed to, I mean, I swear, every year we used to have problems until we got the insurance contract consultant, we used to always have issues with our insurance bids because they're high dollars and it's a very competitive area, and so my concern was that if you had a protest where a vendor was alleging that there was some sort of illegality in the bid process, and if you left the final decision at the administrative level, which wasn't even at the superintendent in the way the policy was, now it was at the CFO level, frankly, the first time the board might hear about it is once you've been sued for it. And so, I, I thought that, you know, as we do with other kind of significant issues, whether they're student discipline or employment, that though I don't think it'll happen often, but in those instances, if the vendor wants to take it to the board before they go outside the district, then the board ought to have an opportunity to do that. I don't think you're going to be inundated with vendor protest and procedures, like I said, you know, all the time you had it, I only knew it to happen two or three times, but I do think it's a good idea to have that there, just kind of for the board's protection and knowledge, and the district's protection and knowledge.
I do want to flag to your question, two more policies that were more than grammatical errors and changes, so for GBEM, the drug and alcohol policies and procedures, we did amend that policy to, we wanted to add a provision for second chance testing for applicants. We have issued it in applicants who otherwise will be qualified in because they might fail a drug test for, for whatever reason, so we added a provision for second chance testing so that they may be eligible for higher skills, they retest within a certain window. Also, we added that to espouse upon employee assistance program guidelines, that the district does have an employee assistance program, but we espoused it upon the guidelines and how to access that program, in that policy. And then, policy JKAD, student safety, this was from one of the student presentations that we had at the board, so we did add a provision after review of that policy to, for yearly review of our safety and crisis response kits to make sure they are up to date and present in the buildings. And as far as EBAB, emergency drills and procedures, those policies and procedures were consolidated just because they were duplicative of each other. Everything else was minor grammatical changes or reflected, policies were changed to update positions.
Great, thank you for that additional background. Board members, any other questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
This is just for information only.
We can hold it till next time. Thank you.
Trying to move it along.
Yeah. One flag, just, Dr. Green, if we could also have someone let the student know when the policy has been amended so that they can be aware of the success of their advocacy and, and.
Yes, thank you, that's a really great flag for us, and I'll ask also, Attorney Moore, if we will, just as you did today, always indicate where an action is being taken that was sparked from a student? Yeah, just to continue to lift that up and be real clear, transparent that their, to your point, that their advocacy sparked something, even if it's just, we reviewed and sorry, we're still at this place.
And since this was information only, again, Dave may be busy, but we may even invite them back for the actual vote, and we can commend them on that.
Okay, Seback.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, board members, we have, we will be moving on to our information action items, Dr. Cormac is going to present the next item, which is a request to approve the agreement between McGraw-Hill Achieve 3000 and the Jackson Public School District.
Good evening, Dr. Seback, Dr. Green, members of the board and our JPS colleagues. The administration is recommending the approval for information action this evening, awarding RFP 2225 Achieve 3000 to provide a technologically, technology-based platform that accelerates literacy growth through differentiated content and instruction for our Project Rise schools. This would be implemented over summer and give students an additional access to innovative literacy content. We did receive a, a major federal grant that supports literacy innovation and is, was championed by our district librarian and that team, and so this would be eligible for our Project Rise schools, which include Boyd, Galloway, Green, Vissable, John Hopkins, Johnson, Oak Forest, Van Winkle, Wilkins, Blinkley, Cardoza, Peoples, Witten, Lanier, Provin and Wingfield. And so, it will be piloted there, and if we see promising results, could potentially be supported elsewhere.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved. Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Mrs. Thompson is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Dr. Cormac. Next, we have the request to approve the agreement between the Children's Defense Fund and Jackson, in the Jackson Public School District, Dr. Merritt will present this information.
Great evening to Dr. Seback, Dr. Green, board of trustees and JPS family. The administration recommends the award of RFP 202301 and the approved, and the improvement of the consultant services agreement between the Children's Defense Fund and Jackson Public School District, and this is to do some early childhood alignment work. Pre-pandemic, we were working with approximately 15 to 25 local daycare centers, collaborating with them on professional development and other activities to ensure that the services that they were offering their three and four-year-old children were preparing them to enter public school with the readiness skills needed to be successful, so we want to continue this work and this work in tandem with our early childhood grant, but more so, this is community-based work and working with those local daycare centers.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the grant agreement between Mississippi Department of Education and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Cook is going to present this information, Dr. Cook is the principal at our career development center.
Good evening, Dr. Seback, board members, JPS family. The administration recommends review of the grant agreement between Mississippi Department of Education and the Jackson Public School District to provide grant funds to further develop existing career academies within the district. This particular grant agreement will provide $48,000 to our district to deepen our work in the career academies currently at Provin, Wingfield, Galloway and at Lanier High Schools. So this money will be used to do professional development training for our teachers as we deepen that work and really move to wall-to-wall career academies, and this provided through career and technical education from Mississippi Department of Education, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved, Mrs. Johnson is second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you, Dr. Cook. Next, we have all had the consent agenda items for finance, they've been reviewed by the board previously, we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration, are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved, Mrs. Thompson is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item personnel, all the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration, are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel?
Some moved. Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Ms. Hilliard is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. I do not believe there is a executive session, so, board members, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mrs. Thompson has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you, everyone, have a good night.